Improve their facilities. Add to that the recent widening of the Panama Canal to accommodate larger ships. And the competition between ports has never been this fierce. The mayor says the ports of L.A. and Long Beach must upgrade to stay number one. Projects like raising cranes to accommodate the new wave of taller ships and teamwork between both cities are part of the game plan.
So Mayor Robert Garcia of Long Beach and I have come together, got federal approval for an unprecedented collaboration where we're sharing truck chassis, where we're looking at environmental issues together, where we're making sure that labor moves smoothly between both.
Our ports have built-in advantages. For starters, we're closer to Asia, where 70% of imports by sea originate. California also has bridges tall enough to accommodate newer taller ships, while the longshoremen of L.A. and Long Beach say they're the best.
So if you bring your container ships here, or you bring your steel ships here, the workforce here in Los Angeles and Long Beach can move any type of cargo better, faster, and quicker anywhere than anybody else in the world.
Raising cranes and raising the bar in the battle for business. At the Port of Long Beach, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
A sign on a street corner is bringing back some of the old luster of Central Avenue's jazz heyday. Anna Marcos was there and helps guide us on a trip down Jazz Memory Lane.
Can you believe this dusty corner of South L.A. was once ground zero for the jazz era on the West Coast? And now the area regains a small hint of its snazzy sparkle with the renaming of Dolphins of Hollywood Square, named after late businessman and music producer John Dolphin's legendary record store.
He named the Dolphins of Hollywood because he wasn't allowed to open a business in Hollywood. So Hollywood wouldn't allow him, so he said he's gonna bring Hollywood to South Central.
Dolphin and his record store, which used to be in the last part of this block, were a huge fixture here in the Central Avenue of the jazz era back in the 40s and 50s.
And all the white kids from Hollywood, they would come there, so he did what he wanted to do. He brought them to South Central to enjoy the music, you know, to enjoy the shop and mingle with the customers and mingle with the celebrities that came through.
It didn't matter what race, what their religion was, everybody was a friend.
Back in the store's heyday, people came to Central Avenue to hear the music of such greats as Sam Cooke, Charles Mingus, and Billie Holiday, and then they went to Dolphin's record store to buy the music.
Not only did John Dolphin help lay the groundwork for bringing rhythm and blues here to L.A., but he really set the tone for being an entrepreneur, businessman and entrepreneur, and someone who was connected to the community. I'm told that he was famous for pioneering the "buy one, get one free" concept.
Dolphin's grandson Jamel has written a biography on his grandfather, as well as a critically acclaimed musical, recorded in Hollywood, which is running at the Kirk Douglas Theater.
Central Avenue is important in the history of Los Angeles. Dolphin's is important, all of Central Avenue is important in.
A sign is a small thing, but many here hope it's not just another street sign, but a symbol of a new renaissance for the Central Avenue corridor. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information on the musical, visit recordedinhollywood.com. While it's been home to restaurants, comedy clubs, and heavy metal bands, and possibly soon, an artsy commercial space with nearly 250 units of housing, but is there enough housing for the poor? Gil Reyes has more from the Sunset Strip. Gil.
Well, young of this planned mixed-use development complex will be built here in the heart of the Sunset Strip at 8150 Sunset Boulevard with new retail, housing, affordable housing, and yes, an iconic architect designing it. So what's not to like? Well, actually, plenty if you talk to area constituents. It's causing a lot of excitement and controversy, a planned 334,000-square-foot housing and commercial complex designed by world-renowned architect Frank Gehry.
I'm just gonna do my best. I'm gonna do my best to be responsible, to be beautiful, to be humane.
It's enormously out of size and scale with this neighborhood and with anything else that's there.
Opponents say the project to be built on what is now a shopping plaza next to the legendary Chateau Marmont is simply too big, with block views of the neighborhood and worsened traffic. But on the other side, developers say they've gathered input from 100 public meetings and say nearby residents are mostly for it.
This project has been designed to work with the surrounding community, with the existing buildings.
Another contentious issue, the amount of affordable housing. Developers had received additional space to build the project in exchange for reserving 15% of the housing for the working poor. 28 of those units would be reserved for very low-income families. The Office of Counsel, District 4, says that's good, but not good enough.
We'd like to see more, whether it's more affordability, or whether they reduce the height or reduce the FAR, we'd like to see more tweaking to this project before it's finally done.
The city's planning commission unanimously approved the plan.
I'm from this neighborhood, I've lived in this neighborhood, I'm supportive of this project, I personally feel it fits within the context of it.
The issue is now headed to the L.A. City Council for consideration. In Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Developers hope to break ground on the 8150 Sunset Project sometime this fall, pending city council approval. Are you afraid of the LAPD? Well, some people are, but events like the one you're about to see are showing that officers are regular people with families and concerns just like the rest of us. Gil Reyes reports from National Night Out.
It's a night of bonding between police and communities. The LAPD's Rampart Station kicked off National Night Out with Aztec dancers, leading a peace march from MacArthur Park to Rampart Station several blocks away. The Aztecs symbolic of this area's rich Latino heritage.
I think it's great. I think it's great. I grew up in this neighborhood, and I think it's really good for them to do this for the community.
Angela Gonzalez among the tens of thousands participating in marches, block parties, and barbecues with law enforcement nationwide. All 21 LAPD stations hosted similar events, free food and entertainment included. This year's National Night Out holds special significance following recent police shootings in Baton Rouge, Dallas, and elsewhere that have really strained relations between cops and communities here in Los Angeles. Outside the LAPD's Rampart Station, officers are reaching out.
So we're really the same, you know, like I'm a father, I'm a husband, and all the people in our department, they have the same roles as everyone else, right? And so there's more common ground than there is uncommon ground between the community and law enforcement. And events such as this, they help bring us together, because when we have conversations face-to-face, I think it allows people to see that.
And it helps fight crime. City Councilman Mitch O'Farrell mentions the success of community-based policing, peace officers and neighbors working together to keep their areas safe. And it starts with good relations.
And so events like this get a lot of people out, especially when you provide food, and they can literally meet the local captain, the local scene lead officers, and make those contacts, you know, relationships are everything. And relationship-based policing is where it's at.
They're always invited. I know here at Rampart Station, they're always invited to ask any questions, come in and visit. My son comes in and visits. As you can see, he wears his police officer uniform.
And no doubt supports our men and women in blue. At National Night Out, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
National Night Out has taken place every year since 1984. Well, how does one of the city's top guns thank his employees? Well, it involves a lot of eating and a bit of a serving style. Anna Marcos explains all at the annual Wesson Employee Luncheon.
Wouldn't it be nice if you could be the boss of your boss for a day and have them wait on you hand and foot? That's what's happening at this employee luncheon, as Council President Herb Wesson and his staff thank employees for their hard work all year. Oh, and you might want to leave the diet at home.
My staff, we serve all of the food, and we do all of the work, and we let them sit down and overeat.
And boy, is there plenty to overeat. Giant fried turkey legs, tacos, fried chicken, Korean barbecue, soul food, and so much more.
I'm a 28-year city employee, and I can tell you, we highly appreciate it. It does stuff for morale, it really helps the morale.
And there you have it, good food and lots of handshakes, hugs, and kisses from the boss.
Everybody bitches and complains about government and us and everything.
But not today. Today, city workers are applauding the fact that they lucked out in the boss department. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Well, you've been waiting for it, and it's finally open. But are you ready for it? Rasha Goel has more on the latest addition to downtown L.A. that's giving visitors a view and a thrill like no other.
It's not for the faint of heart, but if you've got the stomach for it, you gotta try it. Perched 1,000 feet above street level, Sky Slide is the latest and hottest L.A. attraction and the main draw at the new SkySpace L.A. Observation Deck. It sits on top of L.A.'s landmark skyscraper, the U.S. Bank Tower.
U.S. Bank Tower gave us an opportunity to enrich and enliven what used to be simply an office building. We decided to create an observatory and make it a place where locals and visitors could come and enjoy some of the most breathtaking views of Los Angeles.
Made of three-ply glass, you'll get to see one of the best 360-degree views of the city. It's also made to withstand hurricane-force winds of up to 110 miles per hour. Steel outriggers hold it all together.
That will give you the ride of your life, some kind of a thrilling experience that even a Six Flags Magic Mountain would not be able to give us.
The slide takes riders one level down from the 70th to the 69th floor of the tower. A ride that will sure knock your socks off and hopefully put L.A. on the map as having the best slide around.
We hope that OUE, SkySpace Los Angeles, will honor the culture, community, and people that make Los Angeles unlike any other city in the world.
Are you ready to check it out and have some fun? Tickets are available at www skyspace la.com. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The Observation Deck is the tallest in California, and it includes an interactive portion featuring a digital topography wall of the city's beacons. While the popular hiking trail in Hollywood is reopened, city leaders help improve access to fresh fruits and vegetables to underserved communities, and a young community member is recognized for helping preserve a neighborhood gem. All these stories in City B. Hikers, exercise enthusiasts, sightseers, and dog walkers again descended on the hiking trails at Runyon Canyon following a four-month closure for repairs on a mile of water pipeline. The repairs were needed to improve the area's fire protection system, reduce the risk of pipe breaks, and improve local water quality. Thanks to the full closure of the park, officials say LADWP was able to perform this complicated work quickly and safely, completing the water main construction ahead of schedule and saving more than $1 million for Los Angeles ratepayers. And for hikers, the reopening couldn't have come fast enough.
Definitely, it was a long wait, but definitely worth it. Super excited, woo-hoo! I love Runyon!
The trails seem a little more manicured, so I'm excited at what they've done.
After approving the motion by Councilmember Jose Huizar to require all farmers' markets citywide to accept CalFresh EBT cards, city leaders held a resource fair to help farmers' market operators sign up for the program.
We're really excited that people will be able to take our produce home.
This way, if the farmers' market is the only place where they have access to fresh fruits and vegetables, it's gonna make them healthier, it's gonna allow them to have access to fresh fruits and vegetables.
The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Council District 12 and the West Hills Neighborhood Council, presented a certificate of recognition to Ben McDonald for his work and dedication in restoring the greenhouse at the Orchid Ranch. McDonald, a member of Boy Scout Troop 54, oversaw the restoration as part of his Eagle Scout project. McDonald and his team of volunteers spent more than 1,500 hours over a course of a year to complete the restoration, raising money through donations and even funding part of the project himself.
And it also feels really good helping your community and being a part of everything.
If you're an art lover, then you know how powerful art can be, so much so that sometimes it can transform a community. And that's exactly what local Valley residents had in mind as they shared ideas while having a little fun in the sun. As Gil Reyes reports, Reseda Rising also previewed revitalization plans for the Sherman Way Corridor.
If you strolled through Sherman Way and Reseda recently, you might have felt inspired. On a blistering Saturday, artistry flowed up and down the strip, on canvas, on clothes, even on stage.
Just took a little walk, came down here.
How do you like it so far?
It looks fun, it looks like a nice idea, spread the art around, get some vocal artists to be able to show their stuff.
Welcome to the Reseda Rising Art Walk. It's Reseda's first.
We're at capacity, we have no more vendor spaces, we have music going on, we have beer, we have a beer garden, we have a ton of vendors, we have live art, we have art installations. So so far, yes, I think it's a success.
Addie Renteria from the group 1111, a creative collective, organized the Art Walk, which celebrates independent art, music, and yes, indie businesses in Reseda and throughout the 818. New ideas also floating through the mind of Area City Councilman Bob Blumenfield. On this plot of land off Sherman Way, he envisions new retail, housing, and an ice-skating rink in the coming years.
All these projects together are gonna turn this street into a revitalized area, and it's gonna create a domino effect all the way down Sherman Way. So it's something I'm very excited about, I've been working on, it's been a major focus of this area. It's why also we designated this street here as a Great Street under the Mayor's Great Streets Program.
Great Streets is a plan to refurbish 15 of the city's busiest thoroughfares into walkable, bikeable, happenin' destinations. Creativity continuing long after today. On Sherman Way, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Reseda Rising also allowed area residents to jot down ideas on how to revitalize Sherman Way on one of the art installations. Councilman Blumenfield says their input will be considered. While a unique art installation that'll have you squinting explore the city on two wheels during the latest Siklavia, and Japanese culture comes alive in downtown L.A. All this and this week's Things to Do. It's a collection of mysterious worlds designed by local artists, and you can only see them by looking through a peephole. You heard right. Curator Carl Berg has assembled seven artists to construct these small wonder rooms, viewable by one person at a time. A group of artists have each created an original work, and you can see them in a very unique way the next time you're at Union Station. The new exhibit, called Cabinet of Curiosities, runs from August 7 through August 31. Union Station is located at 800 North Alameda. For more, visit unionstationla.com. One of the busiest boulevards in L.A. is taking a break from car traffic and welcoming cyclists of all ages for the latest Siklavia. Three and a half miles of Wilshire Boulevard from downtown to Koreatown will be open to bikers and free from cars. Siklavia's goal is to inspire all of us to reimagine Los Angeles and connect participants to neighborhoods, businesses, health lifestyles, alternative transportation, and each other in a way that is not possible by car. So hop on and get moving on August 14. For more, visit siklavia.org. Come join the downtown L.A. community at the 76th Annual Nisei Week Japanese Festival in Los Angeles's Little Tokyo. One of the nation's longest-running ethnic festivals of its kind, the festival showcases free Japanese cultural events, activities, and exhibits, including music and entertainment, food and fun games spanning two weekends. Enjoy a parade on Sunday, August 14, and plenty of entertainment perfect for the whole family. Enjoyed by thousands every summer, this festival is not to be missed. The fun begins on August 13 until the 21st. For a list of events, visit nisewek.org. And that's a look at some things to do. And that'll do it for this edition. But before we go, a quick note to let you know that Channel 35 has won its 16th Emmy from the 68th Los Angeles Area Emmy Awards. The Emmy is for Music Matters: L.A. Kids and Their Music in the Children/Youth category. Congrats to producer Larry Newman and his program from the Children's Music Workshop, and to the other Channel 35 nominees recognized by the Television Academy. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste. Namaste.
Members, please report to the council chambers. I want to thank Mr. Englander Fuentes. Good morning. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, August 10th. Want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonn, Buscagno, Sodio, Enger, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Kresk, Corian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, current price moves. David Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Bob Blumenfield moves, and Mike Bonn in seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, the Department of Building Safety recommends that items 1G and 1Q be received and filed, and as much as 1G was rescinded by the department and 1Q was paid in full.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order? Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 10 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on item number one.
Okay, let's hold that and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue, please.
Items 11 through 15 are items which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 12 has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, specials members? Then let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 16 through 33 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item 24 special and item 25 special.
Okay, let's hold 24 and 25 at Mr. Englander's request. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 30, and 32.
Okay, thank you. Let's hold those and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Item 34 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Corian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item 34 is a settlement recommendation that budget and finance is considered and recommends approval, so that vote can be taken in open session if it's your pleasure unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, why don't we take that and read it?
Very good, sir. Item 34, in the case entitled Wayne Guillory versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $500,000 in settlement.
Okay. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Well, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special, or with Mr. Buscagno's arrival, we could reconsider item number 11, which is the sole ordinance on today's agenda.
Why don't we do that? Let's reconsider item 11. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Before we begin our presentation, what I'm going to do is we're going to start our general, not general, well, we're going to start public comment. And I'm going to call up Mr. Gus. It's my understanding that you have items 17, 18, 20, 25, 26, 27, and 28. So I will give you your five minutes to speak on those items.
Thank you, sir.
But please, two minutes per item.
Well, okay, but since several of the items are Housing Authority related, I'm going to conflate my comments across all of the Housing Authority comments. Council members, the rules from the Housing Authority apply to everybody in Los Angeles. They apply to us. They apply to you. The Housing Authority rules apply to Mr. Wesson. And I am in touch with the District Attorney's Office because yesterday, the deputy city attorney tried to prevent me from pointing out that the California Department of Social Services cited health and safety violations at a property that Mr. Wesson owns that is in foreclosure. Yet Mr. Wesson attempted to prevent me from talking about California Department of Social Services violations at a property that Mr. Wesson owns that's in foreclosure, where there are developmentally disabled adults. And so when the city tries to prevent me from talking about Housing Authority issues because the council president owns the property, when there are developmentally disabled adults at the property, that's when I bring the issue to the attention of the District Attorney's Office. And Mr. Yocelson now has my description. So don't ever try to prevent me from defending people who are being abused by a slumlord named Herb Wesson. The Housing Authority, the commission appointee, has an obligation to look at all properties where there is trouble. This property belongs, 5230, belongs on the rent escrow account program. You have multiple Housing Authority items on the agenda today. The property has been in foreclosure multiple times in the past five years. Because of the economic circumstances, these issues are causing problems at the house, trash in the yard, old indoor furniture in the yard, a broken washing machine, a broken dishwasher. This is Mr. Wesson's property. I have a right to speak on this, and yesterday, he attempted to stop me from addressing this issue. Now, do you want me to put on Huffington Post the Department of Social Services citations? And then I'll say that the Los Angeles City Council didn't let me talk about this at yesterday's meeting because the property is owned by the City Council President. The laws apply to us. The laws apply to Mr. Wesson. He is under extreme financial duress. That is no reason to prevent me from talking about 5230 Bedford Avenue.
Mr. President, that is appropriate for general public comment. You've already spoken three minutes on one of the items.
So Dan, you'll just get back to a specific.
Now I'm talking about the commissioner who's being appointed to the Housing Authority. I hope, reappointed to it. I hope that she looks into this property because whoever owns this property, 5230 Bedford, 90056, needs to be investigated by the Housing Authority. And when you prevent me from bringing this to the public's attention, I brings it, I brought it yesterday, brings, I brought it to the attention of Alan Yocelson at the DA's office yesterday. I believe that the reason that Mr. Wesson is trying to prevent me from talking about this is because not only this property was in foreclosure as of a few weeks ago, but his own home is in foreclosure. And I believe that he's trying to prevent me from doing this because of extreme personal financial problems that he's having. That's the reason. And this is relevant. And you are responsible for ensuring that I have the right to come up here and talk about it, so long as it's related to the Housing Authority, which is all over the agenda today. If you prevent me, you know I'm going to go on KFI with it, I'm going to go on Huffington Post with it, I'm going to go on City Watch with it, and you are responsible. The other 14 of you are responsible for this. You need to find out what is going on where these developmentally-
Again, again, Mr. President, he should reserve these comments for general public comment. These are not germane to these items.
Continue.
Well, let me have my last 20 seconds now. The rent, and here's the thing, the rent escrow account program is a great program. You need to let me speak about it generally the same way Mr. Walsh speaks about it generally. You can't allow the good comments and then prevent the bad comments. So we like the REAP program, rent escrow account program, but it applies to Mr. Wesson too. Thank you very much.
Okay, why don't you do your general public comment as well?
Council members, what is going on with Mr. Wesson? One month ago, one month ago, Mr. Wesson's rental property, which is worth $1 million, was almost sold at auction for $382,000. You have a council president who's in extreme financial crisis. Why would he let $600,000 of equity go for $382,000? This is a month ago. You have a crisis boiling under, under your hands. It's far worse than Mr. Price's little hidden judgments against him, or Ms. Martinez's judgments. How is it that the council president can let a million-dollar property almost get taken out from under him with $600,000 of equity in the property? His credit rating is through the floor. So how is it that he's able to get these things out of, into foreclosure and just narrowly avoiding a sale? You need to look into this, or else I will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have items 1, 16, 21, 23, 25, and 28. So go right ahead, just try, move to the different items.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. Get your stopwatch ready, Mr. City Attorney. I know how important that is to you. Okay, reappointment, Nancy McClellan to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners. We've checked, she has a perfect record. She has no kiddie porn convictions like a previous appointment that you made, so we have no problems with her. Next, we're going to go to 21, and this concerns domestic violence shelter projects. This means if you get beaten up by your husband, they're setting up 10 to 15 bureaucrats for each domestic violen- I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the shelter is almost always empty except for the poverty craps who work there. That's what's happening, and you want more money for this domestic violence shelter project? Why would anyone even show up there? Next is lead poisoning prevention program services. In fact, people are dying of lead poisoning, and you don't seem to give a syphilitic rat's ass about the lead poisoning. And so you've got a contract, subcontracts, and you're spending $45,000, this is just an increase of $45,000 for lead poisoning. And incidentally, lead poisoning only happens east of La Brea because in the Jewish neighborhoods, lead poisoning is absolutely impossible because they're superior to blacks and Hispanics. We're superior to blacks and Hispanics. Number, next one is number 25. This one, I can't believe this one. This is an offer for reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person who's responsible for the death of Alberto Villarino and the injury of Richard Alacon. What was this, some sort of drug deal that went bad? I mean, you're now offering, it doesn't, $75,000 because somebody beat the fucking shit out of Richard Alacon. I don't expect the Time, the LA Times to do this because the reporter there is flirt, flirts, he gets flirted with by the mayor. He has a crush on the mayor. The mayor wags his ass at Zahnheiser in the story.
Come on, stay on topic, Mr. Walsh.
26, and, but we still want to know. They're not going to talk about a city councilman who has had the shit fucking beaten out of him. What is this? Nobody is interested in this story. Mr. Richard Alacon, is he still in the hospital? I don't know. And believe me, no one wants, they're just going to vote. Mr. Rue will be in charge of making sure that it's covered up. Number 28 is, this is another reward. Remember, no one is going to apply for these awards, rewards, because it's suicide. If you apply for this reward, my guess is that a Second Amendment advocate will stop you. And we know when a Second Amendment advocate stops you, that means that's a threat of murder. The gangs threaten murder the way Donald Trump threatens murder against Hillary Clinton. And so that is 28. And number one, actually, you do a good job, as I said, when you do a good job in building and safety. I, I thank you. So remember, if this Richard Alacon is a different Richard Alacon, say it right now. Buscagno and Bonn are going down on one another over here.
Come on now.
And I just want, there's nothing wrong with going down on somebody.
He is not talking about the item.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Now I want to go into my minute of public comment. And we have R2. This is the-
Alan, give him his minute. He's in the public comment.
The bullshit on, the page on the LA Times says that it's so popular, the expansion, expansion of the light rail to the sea, that it's packed. It's packed, but the parking lots aren't packed because none of the people on there, they're all diverted bus riders who had their bus service taken away from them, and now they're crowded like sheep on the expo line. It has nothing to do, and all you want to do is have them and have the guilty Jews who want the system expanded so that blacks and Hispanics can be their servants west of La Brea. And I'm telling you right now, R2 will be absolutely defeated. We're going to make sure trillion-dollar, multi-trillion-dollar, endless tax. These are the new endless tax. In a year, 20,000, the tax, the R2 tax will still be bringing in the money and you're spending-
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Previn, if you come forward, you have two cards, so you'll get four minutes for those two cards, and then we'll do your general public comment as well.
Okay, good morning, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2. There's a little bit confusing new protocol, but thank you for your interest in city government. Item 17 is a recommendation from the mayor to reappoint Lucilia Hooper to the Housing Authority. This is a, this is a no-brainer. The only question here is you have four, rather, five females and one male. Um, well, the only question here is you have four, uh, rather five females and one male, and I am doing a little benchmarking. Uh, that's not bad, but, uh, it's, it's not fair or equitable or even close, but, but it's not bad. But at the Ethics Commission, as you know, yesterday, uh, where you were not taking comment in front of this body, Andrea Ordin was appointed to the Ethics Commission, and we got a five-pack of ladies, which of course is, uh, is appealing on many levels, but I feel like in the equitable, I mean, there are, if you note, 14, um, gentlemen on this council and one, uh, woman. I don't know, I just feel like we should, uh, try to find a balance. I think that's why we're tracking it, but I'm not 100% sure about that. Um, thank you. So item number, uh, 26, uh, is, obviously, it's time for some appreciation. We have a $44,000, uh, little kerplunk into the mayor's, uh, salaries line, but it is a, it is for a very, very good, um, purpose. This is to help out with some, um, it's the Corporation for Supportive Housing is throwing the money in there. Now, when I, when I hear Corporation for Supportive Housing, I of course am immediately alerted to that organization because I've, I've heard about them before. They are leading, uh, in an area called Pay for Success, uh, Bonin, you probably have heard about this, and, uh, sir, you may have even heard about this too, I know you're very busy at the moment shuffling things around, but Mark Ridley Thomas, uh, has a, um, has a plan at the county, he's been wheeling it out over a couple of years, and the, the idea is not a terrible one, it's to get private partners who are competent, not to say that, uh, public, uh, folks are not, obviously, they are, the highest science and, uh, service is the government, let's not forget that over on the West Wall. But, sir, these programs are, have been problematic. Goldman Sachs ran one in Utah where they tried to help out with the kitty care, and in that process, uh, they were kinda caught not really helping so much, but profiting handsomely. So I just think we have to scrutinize, there, I know the model could be found, but it just requires high degree of watchdoggery. Now, that said, $44,000 to the mayor, if I had $44,000 to help the homeless problem, I'm not sure I would give it to the mayor at this point. He has a very large staff, sir, that, many of whom are already very dedicated. I don't quite understand why that money isn't going to some of the other partners like Mr. Bonifat, you remember Chris List? This is a group that's putting those bins all over, not, well, they're not doing it all over because they don't have enough money, but they would if they could, so that people who are being disenfranchised, separated from their materials, reference Carol Sobel, can go get their materials, and there's a fair plan where they can access that stuff, et cetera. So if I were you, sir, you're very busy, are you, are you here, are you with her? Who, who are you talking to up there? It's no problem, I don't mind, I'm, I'm used to the disrespect, sir. Item number 29, uh, is, I think it's a measure of gratitude that is in order for, uh, I think it's BOE or Buscayeno, but it certainly benefits us. I looked at the address, and I thought, wow, this is great, they're gonna do a little alley vacation. Boy, that address looks familiar over on Magnolia. Hey, wait a minute, my kid goes to the school, so thank you, sir, it's Oakwood, and we are very, very appreciative. This is part of our big, uh, project that they're, we're gonna be putting a bridge over, uh, troubled waters, no, it's over, uh, Moor Park. Anyway, um, sir, finally, I guess I'll have to round out, uh, to the end, which is item 34, sir, this is, uh, the case of Wayne Guillory. Now, I know you settled it for $500,000-
Okay, you didn't put, uh, Mr. Previn-
And I just wanna comment, sir, this is my general-
Mr. Previn, uh, the, the hearing was satisfied on that, so you may wanna talk on something else with your last 19 seconds, and then go into your public comment.
Well, in my last 19 seconds, I-
No, you have 19 seconds left.
Right, and then I have a public comment, right. So I'll, I'll, during the 19 seconds, I'll quietly protest that I can't speak about the Wayne Guillory matter in this section, and then what I'll do is I'll speak it in my general public.
All right. Uh, Mr. Clerk, could you give him his minute for the general public? Okay, Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. Um, it is Mr. Previn here in the general public comment, uh, thank you. Um, well, Guillory was a cop who, uh, 34-year veteran, done a very, uh, he had a pretty good career, I thought, he started as an explorer, I mean, this guy sort of, uh, had a rough road, he was an African-American, uh, and then he, he had a tussle with the LAPD about, uh, slurs or whatever, and eventually, there was some discrimination and some retaliation, and it really, it blanches the typical residence mustache because it is, there's no reason for anyone to face this kind of bigotry in a department, and, but he's gone, come out on the record and said Beck's a good man, and he's trying, but I, this really is painful because the $500,000 settlement, which you all just approved without Nario Peep, it can't possibly, um, amount to the kind of reputational damage and painful, uh, uh, sort of alienation that must have been felt, uh, during these periods when he was being set up and, and punished and treated badly, there were, this is, he was blowing the whistle on ghost rides and other things, this is not-
Thank you, Mr. Previn, thank you, sir. I wanna recognize Mr. Sadio.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, thank you, I'll take a break from the rants and the insanity to welcome a group of students, quiero presentar un grupo de estudiantes. I wanna present a group of students who are here from Tech Chihuahua, and they are here visiting us, Tech Chihuahua, uh, Mexico. They're here visiting us on a project, uh, looking at how we can exchange, um, uh, products, uh, trade, specifically, they produce wine, uh, in Chihuahua, and they wanna get their wine on our markets, and we wanna consume high-quality wine at a very affordable price, uh, of the highest grade and of the highest quality. So, bienvenido a todos los estudiantes que viene de Chihuahua. Mucho gusto que ustedes estar aquí con nosotros, aquí en, en el, uh, conso de la ciudad, de la gran ciudad de Los Angeles. Bienvenido. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. So if I can get Mr. Herman, and Mr. Herman, you, uh, if you'd identify the item, I have you for items 18, 20, item 1, 24, and 25. Uh, Mr. Herman, come forward, you get your five. So just identify what item.
My lord, there's been some issues regarding the liens, and we find them offensive. Why do we have to have liens on properties that have garbage, rubbish? You have the same type of property, Mr. Herb Weston. Under Ellie Watch, they expose that to properties and they're run down. Now, in question, do any of you think that's fair? Are we not being segregated by liens? There is a connection between segregation, the rich and the poor. But I represent the poor, because I am your advocate speaking on liens. And why should anyone default and abuse their properties to pay back the golden state of California for what it is due? Show me the fucking money and pay up! Now I'm going to item 25, dealing with the murder, just like brought out in the news this morning in Boyle Heights. But Jose Wezar has no sympathy. He's a sympathy of the devil because a 14-year-old child was gunned down. Now whether Holmback had intention to kill a 14-year-old-
He is not talking about any of the items.
Okay, come on, Mr. Herman, you said 25. I think he said 25, come on.
He's not the chair, he shouldn't interrupt the speaker.
Just come on, 25.
Fuck, now I'm going into the real issue here. Item 25, Dion, for the record. Motion by Joe Busciano and Big Ears the Dwarf, Relative 2, reward for identification because snitches get stitches. Snitches get stitches, bitches, because that's what you like to hear, Dion, right off the agenda. Identify the apprehension and conviction because of fucking murders, Dion, in Boyle Heights, where fucking Jews used to live. But now we are the brown pride. I am the brown pride, motherfucker, the brown pride of what makes America great, our First Amendment. Now I'm going to item 28, Dion, for the record. Does that, you want me to read it off the agenda? Fine. Motion, bitch O'Farrell and Corretts, with all regards, Peppa Peep, who's not in his chair, oh, there he comes, come on in. Now, calm down, Herman, calm down.
Now, in my transgender voice, I want to ask for a reward for the information leading to the identification and apprehension-
Of someone's life, Dion. Isn't that important to you, Dion? Isn't it important? All you do is read civil rights laws, but you neglect to emphasize how it impacts the adversity of all of us. NWA, NWA, there's no reward, Dion. People in Compton know you won't back 'em up.
He is not talking about these items.
I am talking about rewards because, again, the motive of this council is to harm other people for being snitches. Don't get involved, because they'll kill you. Now, Mr. Chair, what's left of my itinerary? Mr. Chair? You don't know what the hell you're gonna give me? Give me something. What's on the chair, Chair? So I'm going into item number 20. Item 20 deals about property. Whole man is saying, look, I'm going into default, I'm losing my, my property because I can't pay the mortgage. I can't afford to pay the mortgage because I'm above the law. I think I'm better than most of you because I have two properties, or three, or more, and I can't pay my mortgage. So now, it's hilarious, see? It's very hilarious. Because now, we get to see the true color of all of you. True color of all of you, nuri jury. The true color, Dion. Civil rights activist, for the record, Armando Herman, thank you.
Okay, let's go, your general public comment, one minute.
We Americans know what it's like to go through life part-time. Thus, this is about, or before, the big year, 1967, bitches. Things were heating up in the country of Los Angeles and in the country concerning a war, that of immigration, that of a war, that of protests that had led to an eruption like today, Black Lives Matter, and anyone who's killed by the law enforcement. Today, towns, cities, all across the country, have a personal war with bitches. Bitches get stitches, so, and all in words, take it like this, assholes, personal, no? Take it like this, assholes, take it for what it is, because you can't stop criticism 42-year-old seed, right?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Rue, for an intro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, today I have the honor to, um, introduce, uh, my first boss who's here, my first ever professional job, uh, Charles Kim, who also, as you reminded me, Mr. President, was the first Korean-American, uh, deputy to work for an elected official in the local area. And Charles Kim, Charles, do you wanna stand with your students? Um, he's leading a delegation-
Please.
He's leading a delegation of students from CoAct Korea, if you guys could stand. They are, they are a volunteer organization of high school students that do lots of, um, charitable acts such as collecting and sending books to impoverished, impoverished regions in Africa, building homes for disadvantaged communities in Chile, and they are here in the United States to see government in action. And as you saw, you saw government in action, it is what we call First Amendment rights, um, freedom of speech. So, um, you could see it, uh, in action, they are here joining us today, they're going to other cities, meeting with Congress members, so they could learn how government works in the United States. So thank you so much for attending, and thank you, Charles.
And also, Mr. Rue, we should note that, uh, Charles is married to the first, uh, Korean female elected to the California State Legislature, uh, Assemblyperson, and, uh, let's give him a round of, one more round of applause. He started in, he started in this building in July of 1987, because I started with him. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rue. Uh, if we could get, uh, Ms. Ramirez, where are you?
Good morning, yes.
Items 28, 21, 20, and 23. So go ahead and just let us know, what item are you gonna start with?
Okay, let's begin with, um, goodness gracious, great balls of fire. Uh, you, number 23.
Go ahead.
Let us begin with 23, if I can bloody find it here. Okay, again, this is, um, involving the housing, the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department. And, um, this is supposed to be affordable housing in Los Angeles. Now, ladies and gentlemen, anytime you hear affordable housing or low income, it always goes to the wetbacks and gangbangers. Again, this, uh, this agency should be completely shut down, because as we already know, no American citizen, much less our beloved United States military, has never benefited from this agency whatsoever. That's why, City Attorney, middle-class America and legal law-abiding citizens are sleeping on the streets homeless, like me. And though this agency fails to provide, again, legal law-abiding citizens housing, affordable housing, and, um, and, and, and a wonderful quality of life, our quality of life is living on the streets. So I don't understand why we keep paying this agency to exist when they are involved in, in legal unlawful activities, and that is subsidizing every goddamn wetback and gangbanger. They have a roadmap from Peru all the way to Los Angeles, and they drop their kids in San Diego's in bucketfuls, and the fire department has to deliver the babies at the border, and then they could consider wet American citizens. Then they have children, and they are housed, immediately housed. How does that work? How do we, uh, entertain this kind of unlawful activity while America, a middle-class America is living on the streets, while these wetbacks have the road back, all, a roadmap, all the way to Los Angeles, and they get subsidized housing and everything else? That is shameful, truly, this, this agency-
Okay, let's change to a new item.
This agency needs to be shut down immediately, no more wetbacks and no more gangbangers.
Okay, n- new item.
Next one is, um, 21.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, let us, moreover, Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department, this again is an agency that you are so shamefully working along with, that, that speaks in volumes, and if you don't believe me or you think I'm crazy, pop your head out the window or out the door, look at what you have created, you should be ashamed of yourselves, because if I were sitting there, I'd be on my butt making sure that every middle-class American and military would be housed, without a doubt, I promise you that. No one, I wouldn't be sitting on my chair swimming around all day and seeing middle-class America on the streets, how dare you? You ought to be kicked in the ass, every one of you, you have no shame. That's number 21. Number 23. And again, Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department, again, and again, and again, they are subsidizing every goddamn filthy scummy wetback and gangbanger and their chungo kids. Again, this is what we taxpayers are paying for, even those of us that are homeless, okay? You got a wetback, Felipe Fuentes, you got Mitchell Englander, who's more than likely another-
Okay, let's just address the council as a whole.
Wetbacks working here, no wonder they are helping this agency, we need to deport these wetbacks here-
Okay, don't, 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 keep your voice down a little bit.
Shut down this agency because we are paying for this.
Lower, lower, lower your voice.
We pay for this.
Lower your voice, it's the translator, you're hurting their ears.
Oh, my translator, she can't translate-
No, 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 just, just lower your voice, that's all.
Coming down to, um, um, City Comments, I got kicked out of Target in Alhambra on 8/8/16 because I am a victim of gang stalking, so I tell these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers, take your goddamn cameras and cellphones and quit boxing me in and shove it up your ass. Leave me alone, I cannot go anywhere without being harassed, attacked, violated, robbed, or vandalized. And you find that funny? You, no, you leave us alone and get the fuck out of here, Fuentes, you leave us alone-
No, just address the council as a whole.
He needs to address the council as a whole.
Address, uh, Ms. Ramirez, a down-
Any item before the city council-
No, this is general public comment.
Mr. President, she should really be shut down at this point.
Mr. President, she should really be shut down at this point.
I stand up against bullying. Target is involved in bullying, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, I'd just like to note, please, for the record, that screaming into the microphone about things that have nothing to do with the jurisdiction of this council is disruptive of the meeting, and it's not protected by the First Amendment, the Brown Act, or any other provision of law. I would like the speakers to be reminded that if they're going to speak about issues that matter to this council, that are within the jurisdiction of this council, that would be one thing. But to just scream about people and their personal traits into the microphone is just not protecting, and she's continuing to disrupt the meeting now when she's screaming from the back of the room.
Ms. Ramirez, please.
This is inherently disruptive of the work of the city council and the elected representatives of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Spindler? I have item 1, 27, and 28. So go ahead, item 1, 27, and 28.
Oh, okay. I also put a card in for 16 and 23.
Well, this is all I have.
Okay. All right, so we have our famous liens. Liens from people that are in danger of losing their homes if it's not paid. Liens can be very dangerous. But I have good news. If you come down here, and you got a lien, you're gonna get a 50% reduction in your lien by just showing up here, asking for your council person. Now, if you got your council person, and he's from CD5, Paul Corretts, then he'll waive the interest and the penalties, because that's what we do in CD5. See, we're not like the other CDs. The other CDs, you go to Current Price in CD9, and you got your lien, and you want to waive your interest and penalties, Current Price's office will tell you, "Hey, now that ain't right. You gots to pay your God-given right to obligation under the goddamn tax. Jesus Christ told you that." And then the guy's gonna say, "I'm 80 years old, and I can't goddamn pay my lien, because I'm on SSI." Well, I don't care. It's the word of the Lord. Jesus, God, Jesus was a thief. He stole the fish, but he gave it to the goddamn poor to feed. But this is not what we're doing. But you go to David, "Woo!" In CD4, same thing like Paul Corretts. Interest penalties can be waived. Now, this is people trying to fix their homes. But then you got another situation, where you may have a bank-owned home, where somebody once upon a time had a lien. That's still in your name. So if that lien is in your name, and the bank owns the property, that is gonna go against you for 10 years. Because they're gonna record that lien. They're gonna put it on your credit report. So you want to make sure, when you got a lien, come down to City Hall and take care of it. Even better, and I found out about this, I didn't know, if you file bankruptcy under Chapter 7, I didn't know this, under liens, you can reopen your bankruptcy as many times as you want, and you can go back and add more debts. And I didn't know that. But I found out Friday about that, about liens. I found out you could do that. And I don't know who gave me that idea, that you could do that. Can anybody here in this room tell me?
Switch a subject, Mr. Spindler. Switch a, switch a item.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know? H-C-I-D-L-A is the big housing fool. Now, you see, you got this H-C-I-D-L-A, but the real culprit is the MACRA. Now, the MACRA is the big bond buyer. And the MACRA has a lot of relationships. See, this city borrows money, because it doesn't have the money for its finances. So what they do is, is they go to H-C-L-A, and they go, "We need more money." So then they go, and they mortgage all of our parking lots and parking meters and all of our parks and buildings to get an extension on a floating loan under MACRA. And then they sell it to Wall Street, and tell you it's AAA rated. You see, this city is built on a rolling Ponzi scheme. And that's why they have H-C-I-D-L-A in the MACRA, in the NWA, in the EIO, and all of that good stuff, because all those acronyms are meant to confuse your mind. All you gotta do is get into the money. All you gotta do is follow the money. Don't worry about the acronyms. How much money is this city taking in? How much is its budget? And when you find the answer out, you're living in a bankrupted city. And that's why we get to these rewards. People being shot and killed every day. Why are there rewards? Because this is how you settle debts in the ghetto, that's why. These are people that owed money, couldn't pay it, and didn't have the ability to know a banker like some of us do. But, you know, when you're on the street, when you're in the ghetto, you can't pay the man. You got two choices. Work for the man, or get your ass shot, or go into witness protection. So again, fuck these rewards. We don't need these rewards. You're never gonna find these killers, because nobody's gonna come as a witness for a lousy 50 grand.
You want to go into your general public comment?
Oh, of course. So again, I have good news. If you owe a lot of money, just file bankruptcy, Chapter 7. You can go back and reopen that bankruptcy, and add as many creditors as you want forever. And you don't have to pay anybody. You don't have to pay anybody. My mother died at 40 years old, paying her bills. She was a schmuck, because she could have done this. She could have filed Chapter 7. She wouldn't have died of cancer. But my mother worked herself to death while she was going through all this shit. She had to go and drive up the 405 freeway to Doheny High Hospital. I watched my mother work herself to death. 13 years old. 10 days before Christmas, I lost her. And I watched some people, and that just makes me get up earlier every day. I'm gonna work, and I'm gonna make sure I find out more about PDQ.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I have one more, and I'll, I'll get to that right after this. Mr. Buscayino, you wanted to do item 25?
Yes, sir, if we can, Mr. President. I have two detectives here that want to get back on, back to do the people's work for the police department. If I can ask both detectives, Tellez and Gable, to come forward to the table and explain why we are seeking the public's help, help with the capture, capture of this thug who set two homeless people on fire in Wilmington. We're asking Angelenos to come forward with any information that, have information about this case. So detectives, if you can give us the details and why we are seeking a $75,000 reward, moving forward.
Yes, good morning. My name is Detective Barry Tellez, and Detective Gable here to my left. We work the robbery homicide division of LAPD. Just give you a little summary of what happened. On June 7th, 2016, about 5 o'clock in the morning, at 2:20 West Anaheim in the city of Wilmington, our victims Alberto Villarino and Richard Alarcon are asleep when an unknown person came up to them while they were sleeping, poured a flammable liquid on them, and set them both on fire. A very brutal way, very painful. Mr. Villarino died later that day. Mr. Alarcon is currently in the hospital in critical conditions as we speak. And we have no leads. And we are looking for the public's help in trying to capture this person who did this.
Thank you, detective colleagues. What a heinous crime committed by a coward, the most vulnerable among us. This savagery of this attack should shock and sicken all Angelenos in this city and beyond. Alberto and Richard were without shelter, without protection, and the sick individual cruelly took advantage of their misfortune. Being doused by flammable liquid and set on fire. How sick. How evil, how brutal. So today, with the full force of the city council, we offer a $75,000 reward for information that leads to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of this individual responsible for the death of Alberto and serious injuries of Richard. We're asking anyone to come forward by calling Crime Stoppers 1-877-ASK-LAPD. Text CRIMES with the word LAPD, and text your tip to detectives here at the table. I've seen many crimes in my days committed, working the streets of the city of Los Angeles. This is one of the most brutal crimes on humanity. And we're asking folks to come forward. Thank you so much for your presentation, and ask for your support moving forward on the $75,000 reward. Thank you.
Thank you, let's prepare to vote on that item. Oh, Mr. Bonn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise and thank Rishi Buscayino for bringing this motion. It's an unspeakable crime. And frankly, it's not all that surprising, given the climate, and some of the dialogue, and some of the rhetoric that is out there in neighborhoods throughout the city of Los Angeles. Throughout the city, in various neighborhoods, on billboards, on blogs, on nextdoor.com, in neighborhood conversations, there is a repeated rhetorical narrative going on out there that is dehumanizing people who are homeless. That is, is saying that these are vermin, that is saying that people are all criminals, that are saying that people are all drug addicts, that saying people without shelter are all child molesters. It is a repeated ugly narrative. And it dehumanizes people who are suffering, people who are in need, people who need our assistance and who need our help. And just as we see what's happening at the national level, contributing to a coarsening of our dialogue that can lead to violence, or can threaten violence, we're seeing the same thing in our neighborhoods. And it is very important that we, that we match that ugly rhetoric with the reality. That every time we hear a story, an isolated story of someone who is homeless, who has committed a crime, that we remind someone of a story of someone who is homeless, who is the victim of a crime. That every time we hear a story about someone who is scary or living on the street, who is frightened someone, that we remind them of a story of a veteran who finally got housing after spending 20 years on the streets, after serving our country and being abandoned by this country. That we remind people of the mother with two children who lived in a vehicle in front of a school in Venice, who was recently housed and has turned her life around. We need to remind people, all of us, and we need to say back to our constituents, when we hear these poisoned narratives, that we're talking about human beings. Because when we, when we forget that these are human beings, when this dialogue becomes this poison, this is exactly what happens. And I'm afraid of this happening in more places because of the dialogue that we hear. So I'm damn glad that we're standing up and putting such a big reward on here. I hope we nail these people, thank you.
There are no more members on the queue. Mr. Buscayino, would you like to close? All right. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, let's move on to item 18.
Very good, item 18, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Mohammed, Oscar Mohammed, are you here? Mr. Mohammed, you're speaking on item 18.
Item 18, item 18. That's about the home, that's about the mismanagement of the trust fund that you have for the homelessness, for the housing.
Sir, this is on rent escrow, the rent escrow account. That's item 18.
No, I haven't speak for, I didn't sign for item 18.
Okay, well, you have a card that you filled out that says item 18. If you don't want to speak on this item, that's fine. You also filled out a card for public comment, which I'm gonna call a little, a little later on. So you don't want to speak on item 18?
Yeah, let me, let me find item, item 18. But item 18 have something to do with getting money for a program for the homeless?
No, sir, that's not the item before us.
But I thought it was some misrepresent of the resources of the homeless.
No, sir, that's not the item. But you did fill out a public, general public comment card, which I'm gonna call a little later in the meeting, okay? Thank you. That concludes cards. Mr. Herman, we can do without your applause. Mr. Clerk, that concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
Let's move on to item number 1.
And Madam President, before getting into additional cards on that matter, there's been a request from the department to, to continue items 1A, 1J, and 1P to August 24th.
Okay, without objection. The first I have, the first card I have for item 1A is Tyrone Wilmington. Are you here? Tyrone Wilmington for item 1A. So that person is not here. That concludes cards on this item. I apologize, there is another, there are two more cards. Mary Jane Ribaya on item 1J. Is there someone here by that name? Mary Jane Ribaya. And Mr. Ochoa on item 1P. They're not here. That concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
And Madam President, there's been a request to refer item 24 with amending motions 24A and 24B to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna open the roll on the following items. 16, 17, 20, 21, 23, 27, 28, 30, and 32. We've taken public comment on all these items.
Madam President, pardon, pardon us. 16, 17, 21...
23.
23...
27. 28, 30, and 32.
And Madam President, for the record, 23 has an amending motion that was circulated, that's 23A. We should pull that out and vote on that separately.
Okay, let's vote on 23 separately. Can we now move on to vote on the remaining ballots?
Yes, I, I do believe item 26 should be added to that list as well.
Okay, correct, and item 26 as well. Okay, these items are before us. Mr. Buscayino, did you have anything? Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
Madam President, if I can, just recognize, we just confirmed the reappointment of Commissioner LaCelia Hooper from the Housing Authority. Thank you, Ms. Hooper, for your continued commitment and dedication to the residents of the city of Los Angeles and those living in our housing developments as well. Thank you so much, a resident of Watts. Really proud of your leadership, and thank you for being a friend and a partner. Really appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. Congratulations. Thank you very much for serving our residents.
Madam President, I believe that leaves item 23. Again, there was an amending motion, 23A, that's been circulated.
That item's now before us as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
Mr. Englander?
Yes, can I please ask that 23 go forthwith?
Forthwith for Mr. Englander on item 23.
And Madam President, I do apologize. Item 20 is still before us. And Madam President, I do apologize, item 20 is still before us.
Okay, let's vote on item 20. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, item passes, Mr. Rue. Did you want to move forward with your presentation, sir? Are you ready? The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we have the students coming on up. We have John Marshall in the house today. Good morning, colleagues. I am excited to be here today to welcome John Marshall High School and the Barrister Decathletes to Los Angeles City Hall. The Barrister Decathletes are this year's winner and the national large school champion for the 2016 United States Academic Decathlon Competition Online. Let's give them a big round of applause. We wanted to try to bring them before recess, but we missed that time period, but we thought it was better when it's back to school that we recognize them here today. And, you know, as you guys know about the decathlon, every year, over 30 states participate in this challenging national competition. And this year, these decathletes behind me defeated their competitors with the highest score ever, 42,636.5 points, to be exact, out of 48,000 points. However, this is not their first national win. Marshall High School holds six national championship titles, as well as six citywide and a few statewide titles. And this team's study regime and training is grueling and intense. During the summer, they study three days a week at five hours a day. During the school year, six days a week at 20 to 25 hours a day, totaling over 800 hours. They do all of this in preparation for the 10-subject competition that includes speech, interview, essay, art, music, language and literature, social sciences, sciences, economics, and math. I just get tired of thinking about all of this, and I'm so glad I'm out of school now. But therefore, I am so excited to recognize students for all their hard work, and the students include of this past year's team, Martin Gonzalez, Abir Hussain, Tamin Khan, Giovanni Martinez, Arbin Olarte, Tina Tan, and last, Gunmin Yun. Additionally, you know, it's also, while it's an amazing day, you know, we wanted to acknowledge Eileen Kang, a bright and intelligent young woman who passed away recently. Eileen was trying out for this year's team, and I know while the Marshall students are very excited about their win and preparing for next year's competition, they come today with a dark cloud because one of their own just recently passed away. She will be greatly missed by her family, friends, and teammates, and our sincerest wishes and deepest sympathies are with you all. But, you know, the students could not have done this without their amazing coach, Larry Welsh, who is a legend. And I want to really thank you for guiding the students to the finish line. And at this point, Coach, I'd like to hand it off to you to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members. It was an amazing year, needless to say, and we're very excited to actually be here. Actually, you don't know this, but back when Mr. Rue was trying to become a council member, he actually, after he won the election, we sort of cornered him and invited him to come to our Hall of Fame ceremony. And so he sort of kind of said, "Okay." And he did come to the Hall of Fame ceremony, and of course, he became our lucky charm at that point, because obviously, it's due to him that we were able to win the online national championship amongst all of the competition from the 34 other states that participate in this competition. The decathletes themselves are an amazing group. Five of them are seniors getting ready to go off to great colleges and universities, the likes of which would be Swarthmore and other schools that you may have heard of. Needless to say, we have four juniors that are here with us today, and three of those juniors are trying out for this coming team, and ultimately, one of them will be our student math coach. So we are excited to be here, and we think that even though our council member was reluctant to go to John Marshall High School, he is our honorary barrister, and as long as he remains a council member, we will be a championship team. So no pressure on you, you know, you just need to make sure you stay in this chamber here. We also have a wonderful surprise for you. Robina, I think you should step forward.
Councilman, we are honored and very privileged to present to you a token of our gratitude, our honorary Marshall barrister hat, and a picture of us to remind you of your unending support for us and how honored we are to have you on our side. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Coach, and thank you to the team. And yes, you know, Marshall was my home school, and I was, it was very difficult, my decision. But one of the main reasons I wanted to go to Marshall was because of the decathlon team, because Marshall has an illustrious, long history of the academic decathlon. They've been around and winning for decades. And I take you up on that, you know, what you told me. I am going to be here next year. So, but I only expect nothing best from the next year's team, and I'd love to bring you back here again. And I know, not just as the online champions, and I know council member Englander is listening as well, not just as the online champions, but as the national champion next year. So don't make me look bad in front of my colleagues. So, thank you so much. And with that said, want to again, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, congratulate the Barrister Decathletes from John Marshall High School. Your futures are bright, and we continue success in your endeavors. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Students, you guys can stand. And these are the students from Marshall High School and potentially next year's team.
Over 35 members trying out for next year's nine members.
Great.
Very well. Mr. Rue, we have Mr. Kocorian? No? Never mind. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that item 12 be sent forthwith, please.
Item 12 forthwith for Mr. Kocorian. And Mr. Clerk, we have item 30 before us.
Yes, Madam President.
There are no cards or speakers on the queue for this item, so let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fifteen eyes.
Now, let's move on to public comment. Mr. Oscar Mohammed, are you here?
You neglect me to speak on item 22. You called item 18.
Mr. Mohammed, I did not have a card for you on item 22. The only cards you filled out were for item 18 and public comment. Your time is running out, so you need to speak on public comment now.
Yeah, we live in a very racist society, though, very racist. And the black people are the victim of racism. We have racism in politics. We have prejudice in politics. We have bigotry, saying, "If a hypocrite, a person obstinately intolerant, devoted to his own opinion, impregitated, and one who regards and treats the members of a group and race of ethnic groups with hate and tolerancy," that's what the politician represent to the black folks today. Politicians have a new rope. They hang the black men around their necks with it and tie it back to the tree and whip them till the blood come out the back. We should end Skid Row. We should move the homeless off of Skid Row. Give the homeless a lunch bag and a ticket and send them back where they come from.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. The next speaker, Mr. Herman. Next speaker is Sean Murphy. Sit down, Mr. Herman.
You calling?
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, Madam President, good morning. I'm not back yet. I'm just paying my respects to my fans so they can see me. I'll be back on the 14th. We need to keep our streets cleaned, sidewalks repaired, and I'm concerned about the sequestration of the bike ride on Sunday. Wilshire Boulevard has been closed for the past weekend since June due to the extension of the purple line. How are they going to get around that? I'd like to ask you a question about that.
Thank you, Sean. It was nice to see you.
Hi, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Gardner, and for the past year, I've been honored to serve as the chair of Councilmember Buscino's Youth Council. And I want to talk about one of the motions that's before you today about declaring November to be Youth Civic Engagement Month. You see, for me, civic engagement is much more than just having an interest in government. It really is a promise to put everything that you have at the service of others. Now, civically engaged people are paramount for the success of our nation, because the vision of our city will really never be complete until people from all over continue standing up and doing what they can to make sure that no one is left behind by progress, that no one is forgotten by hope. Now, I urge all of you to vote for this resolution, of course, and to advocate so more youth can be involved in your districts, more youth have a voice in our government, because that's the very first step in making sure our democracy is as healthy as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very impressive you're in, Mr. Buscino. Next speaker is Jacqueline Richardson.
Some LAPD substations have little pockets of crime in them. They're so small that if you go into LAPD to look for them at these small substations, you won't find them. You have to know somebody who knows somebody who knows somebody who knows somebody that knows what those little pockets are. The women police officers know nothing about it. If they found these little pockets by looking at it, they wouldn't know what it was or what they do. The INS knows something about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clerk, that concludes public comments. What's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, are there any announcements? Saying none, can we all please rise for adjourned motions? To my right, Mr. Koress, do you have an adjourned motion?
As we adjourn in memory of a friend of mine, and I would imagine at least a few around this horseshoe who passed away this past Thursday, Frank Fenton, who was 78 and was a beloved and respected community leader and elected official in Beverly Hills. He was that city's only elected official to have served as school board member, city treasurer, council member, and mayor, a post that he relinquished when he retired in 2009. As a child, he escaped from Germany during World War II and came to the U.S. by way of Cuba. He started elementary school, but then his family moved to Brazil. He came back to Los Angeles and finished high school at Hamilton High, where I went some years later. He graduated high school, joined the Coast Guard, and later, working at Mount Sinai Hospital, he met Judy, a volunteer at the hospital whom he soon married. He graduated from Cal State LA with a degree in business administration, became a stockbroker, and rose to the upper echelon of that industry, becoming senior vice president at Smith Barney. Judy and Frank moved to Beverly Hills in 1971, and with three kids going to school there, they both became very involved in the school's PTA, where Judy eventually became president. His two sons played Little League there, and Frank became the Little League's president, and so Los Anacoh Parks Baseball Field now bears his name as well. 1983, he entered electoral politics, getting elected to the Beverly Hills Board of Education and reelected in 1987. After that, he chaired the Beverly Hills Education Foundation and served on the Parks and Rec Commission before being elected and reelected the city treasurer. In 2005, he was elected to the Beverly Hills City Council and eventually served as mayor. He was dedicated and caring, a source of sound, sensible leadership. He was always involved in every significant community cause and government undertaking. He also had major roles with the Maple Counseling Center's Board of Directors, the Beverly Hills Police and Community Together Organization, the Wilshire Boulevard Temple, the American Red Cross, and he was a great example of decency and leadership for every one of us who had the pleasure to know him. Frank is survived by his wife Judy, their children, grandchildren, Mindy Fenton-Samuels, Kelly Samuels, Sean Samuels, Gary Fenton, Brady Fenton, Carter Fenton, Steve Fenton, Nate Meadows, Troy Meadows, Lexi Bell, Jennifer Smiley, Kayden Smiley, Parker Smiley, and his dedicated caregiver and trusted companion, Daisy Sorto. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Koress. Any other adjourned motions to my right? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Jimmy D. White, who served as a counselor, administrator, and attorney advisor at UCLA's Dashell Center for International Students and Scholars for 35 years. He passed away in Los Angeles on May 27th of cancer. He was 68 years old. During his long career for UCLA Student Affairs, White served thousands of students and scholars from more than 120 countries and changed their lives for the better. From August 1978 until June 2013, he was a counselor for students and scholars, a counseling attorney and assistant director and director of student services at the Dashell Center. Born and raised in LA, White completed his undergraduate education in political science at Dominguez Hills. He then joined the U.S. Air Force and spent three years as chief clerk for the Weapons Systems Security Branch in Germany. After his assignment in Europe, he entered UCLA's School of Law and graduated in June 1976. He continued his education in Europe, and in 1978, he completed a master's degree in international and comprehensive law at the University of Brussels in Belgium. He served as a consultant on several boards, including the Academy for Business Leadership, the RAND Graduate School, the DEU International School, and the University of West LA Law School. Passionate about education and sports, White was a fixture on the UCLA campus, always seen wearing his Bruins cap. He is survived by his wife, Kuniko, his sons Eric, Nate, grandson Maximilian, and his sister, Crystal Johnson. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Price. To my left, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I ask that we adjourn today in the memory of Guadalupe Quesada Flores, who passed away on Monday morning of July 25th, 2016. She was surrounded by her family. Guadalupe was affectionately known to the family and the community and the children in the neighborhood as Mama Lupe. Mama Lupe lived in Pacoima in Arlida. She was born in Jalisco on August 2nd, 1921, and grew up in Guadalajara, where she married Santiago Quesada. Together, along with their five children, they moved to Los Angeles in 1970 in search of a different and more prosperous life. Her husband... Her husband sadly passed away in 1973, which is when she devoted her entire life in growing her family. Mama Lupe's family worked in the textile industry for many years. She was well-known for having a very strong work ethic and for being a very good cook. One of her proudest moments that she spoke of was when she became a citizen in 1997. Her family often remembers her and for her strength, but one of the things that I think it really demonstrates who she was is that she really worked very much like most of our families do and have for their children and their extended family, and she clearly is the embodiment of the American immigrant and dream. She is survived by her five children, Concepcion, Ignacio, Jose Cruz, Carlos, and Marta; eight grandchildren, Rogelio, Jorge, Veronica, Carlitos, Elizabeth, Emanuel, Monica, Anne Francisco; and nine great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Englander? Anyone else to my left? Saying none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.